Haley is sick and Todd, yes, she said she finally got the place that the rest of her family has. And Todd has a conflict, so they will not be here tonight. All right, so comments from the public not on the agenda, items not on the agenda. I don't see anyone, so let's move right into the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled? Okay, entertain the motion that we approve the consent agenda consisting of the meeting minutes of January 21st and January 28th, approval of warnings, approval of leave of absence for Sean Seifert from May 26th to December 31st, and approval of professional appointment of Alexis Keltwee to be the learning specialist. No, just make the motion. Thanks, Al. All those in favor say aye. Aye, and opposed say nay. So we agreed at the last meeting that it would be helpful for the whole board to understand the arbitrator's award for school employee help benefits. And Deb is here with us tonight. You got some information in your board packet, and this will be a time for us to try to understand more completely, at least the high-level pieces. I think there are some underlying pieces that nobody understands yet, if that's fair to say. So, Deb, I'll turn it over to you.
Hello, everyone. Debbie Anderson. I'm not sure I met everyone.
Did you have something for us?
Hi.
No.
Hi, Deb. So basically, this is a review from what the VFBA information the VFBA has provided to us, so I just kind of took their information they provided, kind of presented in slides, and can try to talk to how it's going to impact us as well as we go through it. So the commencement, so basically, even though technically it was supposed to start July 1 of '20, they're basically saying everything is going to remain in effect as it is now until January 1 of '21. So really, the new provisions won't take effect until January 1 of '21. So that's when that will go in, two of them, and it expires December 31st of '22. It was kind of like anywhere and a half. And the eligibility has, for us, has a significant change. For teachers, we used to, it was .5 FTE and higher, so this is kind of consistent with that for teachers, but for support staff, it's going to be changing. So it's now a minimum of 17 and a half hours per week. So any employee who works on average 17 and a half hours per week, they're eligible for the health care. So that impacts us greatly on the support staff side because it used to only be full-time employees, which is defined as 30 to 40 hours per week. So that will be where the significant cost will be incurred. So we also, the operating cost, so the out-of-pocket cost, the OOP, is the HRA. So the HRA component is not prorated. So for part-time employees, it's prorated. We have to negotiate, what is that proration? You know, is it out of a 40-hour work week? Is it out of a 30-hour work week? Or what is that? Because that's going to make a significant difference in terms of how it's going to impact the cost to the district. But the HRA is not prorated. So whatever the HRA is for the district, the cost is the same if they're 17 and a half hours a week or if they're 40 hours a week. So that does not get prorated. So full-time status, I kind of mentioned this. That's what we're going to have to negotiate. You know, so for teachers, it's already kind of defined. It's based on FTE, which stands for Full-Time Equivalent. So if it's not one FTE, then obviously it's less than full-time. So we have to do that. But right now, for support staff, it's kind of a range. We say 30 to 40 hours. So we need to kind of negotiate for part-time, what is that kind of proration going to be based on? So the tiers of coverage, and for some districts, this was going to be a bigger issue than for us, so we have to offer single, two adults, parent, child, and family to all eligible employees. So some school districts were only offering single coverage for parent educators, say, or school year employees. For us, we've been offering anybody who's eligible. We've been offering all four tiers of coverage, so this won't be a big deal for us. And it's probably good because this one is the one that they're not agreeing at the state level between the association and the board's team as to when does that take effect? The association's arguing that that takes effect July 1 of '20, and the boards, the board's side is saying, no, that doesn't take effect until January 1 of '21, like everything else. That doesn't impact us, so it's not as important. So the premium contribution, so this is for all licensed teachers and administrators. This really represents no change for us, so it's 80%. The district needs to cover 80% of the premium cost of the gold CDHP plan, which is the same as what we're doing now, so no change there. And then this is guaranteed through the end of this agreement, which is 12/31 of '22. For support staff, for those paying less than 20%, right now, we pay 88%. The employee pays 12% for support staff, so that's going to stay in existence until January 1 of '22. So that's, no changes basically to support staff contribution until January 1 of '22. And then after that, so basically, for the last year of this agreement, it'll increase by 2%.
Will that cover, new support staff will fall under having to pay 20%?
No, all support staff, so whatever condition, right, right, yep. So this is, that's my understanding. Kim, unless you understand differently, I think it's any support staff that we have, regardless of when they're hired, would be the 88% until...
So it's at the end of this?
Right. So I think it applies to everybody. I don't think we segregate and say, okay, if you were hired before that, you're only paying 88%. You continue to pay 88%, but new employees pay 80. I don't think that's the case. I think it's 88 for everybody, and then it'll be 84 for everybody, or for the district after January 1 of '22. The out-of-pocket, this is the HRA. So for licensed teachers and administrators, the employees, so the amounts are the same as what we're doing now, so the employees will contribute, the employer will contribute 2,100 for single or 4,200 for family or two-person plan. But the difference is that this contribution is, the employer pays first dollar. So instead of the employee paying the first dollar, because right now, we have, for teachers and administrators, we have to pay the first $800 if we have family or two-person coverage, and then the district pays the remaining costs after that. So that'll have a significant cost impact to the district to pay the first dollar. So I've kind of analyzed the data and looked at, what was all of our claims for last year? What did we end up paying? And what would we have, what would we have paid had this been different? Had this been the way the state's plan is? Instead of paying like 65% of the HRA expense, we'd be up to like 85%. So it does make a significant cost difference in the HRA expense to do the first dollar coverage. And this also applies not only to this gold CDHP plan, but also to the platinum and the gold plans. Thankfully, I think it's not advantageous if you look at the premium, if you have to pay, because folks who do the platinum and the gold, that isn't the CDHP plan, but the cost of that, because they got to pay the difference in the premium, doesn't outweigh their out-of-pocket. So it really doesn't, it's not really cost impact. It doesn't make any sense for an employee to do it, but it's still available for that. And then the HSA, there's also an HSA available for the silver CDHP plan, and it's the equivalent contribution. So for the, if anybody elects a silver CDHP plan, then it's not going to be 85% of the $4,200. It's going to be the $4,200 day one when they walk in the door. So they can be here for one month, you pay the $4,200 to the employee, it's their money. If they leave a month later, it's their money. So it's not a prorated portion. It's not like you can say, give me the money back. You only earned so much of it. It's their money, so you pay that right away. So that's, that's going to be important. I don't know how that's going to play out and how many folks would choose that, because there is an $8,000 out-of-pocket maximum under that plan. So they are taking a bit of a risk to do that. But it is important to note that this could have a cost impact. For support staff, it's, instead of being 2,100 and 4,200, it's 2,200 and 4,400. So you're paying more towards the HRA. Right now, for support staff, it's the same total dollar, so it's 21 and 42 is what we're paying. They have a different share configuration. So this actually makes the HRA expenses even more expensive for support staff in this area, and applies to all the plans as well. The HSA is also available for the gold, for the silver CDHP for support staff. Third-party administrator, so, and this is what we're doing now, that we're responsible to pay all the administrative fees for the third-party administrator, and that's in our current agreement, so that's not a cost difference for us. Need to provide auto-pay to providers, has to be the default method. Our current provider provides that, so we're kind of meeting that requirement already. If you're not able to provide that, we have to provide a debit card, but because we do auto-pay to the provider, that's not a big issue. So this is not the significant portion for us. The good thing is, we're not locked into one single provider, so we can keep our current provider, who's been working out very well for us lately. So we don't have to change that, so that's a, that's a good thing. Covered employees, so this is interesting impact on the way the laws are defined right now. It covers licensed teachers and administrators and support staff, but it doesn't cover some of those positions that are in between, like the HR director, or the COO, or the OT and the PT, and basically, all the exempt level employees that are not under, they're not a licensed educator, and they're not considered support staff because they're more of the exempt level. So what's being recommended is that we treat them the same as the licensed educators and administrators, which is what we do now, so that's not really a change in practice. But that's, they still need to get some clarity on that, on how to treat those folks, because currently, they're really not covered under this provision. And that was the presentation, so if you have questions.
Thank you.
Any?
Yeah.
Hey, Deb.
Hi.
So you know this stuff inside and out.
Yep.
And in your reading of this, and we've always, I think, worked hard to make sure that our staff and our teachers had really good health care coverage. When you look at what's being implemented compared to what we had, do you feel like our employees are still, are still getting a good, are still getting good health care coverage, I guess?
I would say they're getting better. And I did mention on here, I probably skipped over it in one of the slides, we're also obligated to provide domestic partner coverage, and that's going to also be a significant cost impact to us, not only for HRAs, but also for the premium cost associated with that. So I just wanted to make sure I indicated that. So I think the cost, I don't think they're losing coverage. I don't think, especially in our district, they're gaining, because the HRA expense, the HRA is going to cover the first dollar, and only if they exceed that amount, that first dollar, do they have to pay anything. So they're only going to be responsible for the end of that. So that's better coverage for them, and then they can also add domestic partners, which was never available to them before. Part-time employees can now access it. The only, the only group that may be a little bit negatively impacted is that we used to treat .8 teachers and above the same as full-time. Right now, because we have to prorate it, it has to be prorated if it's not one FTE, so we're obligated to prorate that benefit to 80%. So that's the, there's a slight savings for that, but it's still minor compared to the cost of everything else, that it's almost not worth mentioning. To them, it's going to have an impact, but overall, cost savings is not tremendous.
Brian had mentioned earlier that it was about a nearly 14% health care increase?
Yeah, the premium increase was 12.9%.
13, yeah.
13. How, with us paying first dollar, how does that shift the cost? What is the dollar amount that we have to absorb now?
So I think it'll have a long-term, I can't predict what impact this is going to have on premiums, but it will likely increase the premiums even more. So we're still paying the same percentage of the premiums as we are, you know, for next year, we'll be paying the same percentage of the premiums. But long-term, it may have an impact on the premiums, it will increase even greater. So right now, I mean, I think employees are probably getting better benefits than they ever did under the VHP plans that we had before, or even the JY plan that was like the premium plan. They're probably getting better coverage than they're getting under that. So if the whole idea behind these plans was to reduce the, the cost of the premiums could be kept low, this reverses that, and you probably see a trend of premiums growing, you know, 13% plus going forward.
And I think, just to, and I'm sure it makes sense to all of us, but to put a point on it, it's really that first dollar coverage for deductibles was pretty important in terms of that being a sense of ownership by the employee. And I think that's where they envisioned the potential for ballooning or more rapidly increasing premiums because of utilization shifting with who is paying the first dollar. So that was the anticipation in trying to create more sustainable. When we went to the employees doing first dollar, that that awareness might change utilization. I don't know whether that was ever able to even be realized before we were to find ourselves in this situation now. So whether or not the theory would have held regardless, wouldn't matter, because we're not going to see it.
Right.
We're now going to see it back to the way it was, so.
Well, this was a shift to what was becoming, and I, it's been a couple of years since I know the data up right at the tip of my fingers, but this is a trend that's been happening in private industry quite a bit, to move to high deductible with an HRA or an HSA, and then to transfer some of that first dollar cost onto employees to try to create a mechanism in which there was a, there was a safety net, but there was some regulation in that first 800 or 400. So the school district moved in that way, but I, I don't believe private industry has moved back to this direction. So, you know, this is in a little bit of, almost like going to a defined benefit plan nowadays, or something like that, is, it's a little different than the direction.
I think one thing that still confuses me and frustrates me is, I don't think an employer paying part of a copay on high deductibles occurs that much. As I've asked the question, and what I understood, it's more unique to school districts, but not outside, because looking at my insurance that I had previously, my deductible was, high deductible was 4,000, 5,000, and we're okay to have that carry, we're glad for that. But any contribution to defer that, we had to put out, do a tax-deferred HRA, and then demonstrate copays, and then make a claim against that. So I guess some of the information, I find it fault that, I was told that this was pretty standard, but I don't believe it is. It's, it's just unique through districts.
Yes, I would say it's probably, it is unique probably more to school districts. I think other employers obviously do that, but it's, I think you're right, high deductible plans elsewhere, employees are responsible. So whether they open up their own HSA to help offset the cost, then they can do that, or maybe the district might have a, or the employer might have a contribution to the HSA, but it's not going to cover the whole out-of-pocket, you know, expenses, you know. So it probably isn't an anomaly outside of school districts to do that on a regular basis. It was probably normal within the school district realms for those who had negotiated prior to us to offer the HRA. Yep.
And then as far as the thought that maybe the usage may differ in drive down the premium, I don't think that that's going to occur, because the insurance is there when you need it, and it's going to be regardless of usage, is going to determine the premium increases year to year. So I don't believe the usage is going to differ. I think it's going to continue to be used, I mean, the same manner as it is, or maybe more, now knowing you don't have the first out-of-pocket.
Right, absolutely.
Other questions, Al?
I was looking at the FY '21 budget number. It's 8 million, roughly 8 million. So are we, do we believe that that would increase 8% or 10% per year? Is that roughly ballpark what we're talking?
For the insurances?
For the premium?
Yes, I would. My assumption, I mean, I don't know about the V-HI rates and how they're being set, but I gotta, have to assume that the shift in the way the plans are structured and the HRA being structured, the plans are really the same. The way the HRA is being structured, I think that's going, you're going to see that being more normal around the 12% increase in premium. And I think the, actually, the gold CDHP, the percentage increase was higher than any other plan. I think it's because most, most employees are on that plan, and they saw that, okay, it's not cost-effective. So they're not increasing all of the plans at the same percentage. They're increasing them based on how much money they're actually losing on those, and like, oh, for this plan, we got to increase at this percentage. On this one, we got to only increase at this percentage. So it's not going to be across-the-board increases on each plan.
Okay.
Al.
What's that?
You do understand that the projected increase is built into the budget?
Yes.
Yeah. So what we're concerned about is future years, since, as Andre and Kim have pointed out, there isn't any reason to think about utilization, because it's not going to cost you anything to go, if you feel like you want to go.
But we have time to consider alternatives, at least, or...
No, we don't.
No.
No. This is a statewide health plan that we have to offer. Kim?
Certainly don't want to leave the impression that there was ever any plan that we were hoping employees wouldn't use the benefits available to them under insurance, but rather, like, the ear infection could be a, like, an emergency visit over a weekend, or it's like, oh, if I've got to pay that $100, I might wait till Monday and go to my primary care, and that might be different. So I think, I just did want to clarify that. I don't think it was the hope that, either at the state level or at our local level, that people would stop using their benefits, but rather, a little bit more of a pause around how benefits are being used, that might benefit the overall longer-term growth of premium rates.
People have had between 800 and 400 dollars as first-dollar exposure so far. And so if we looked, even if we just said, you know, we're going to absorb now $200 times 600 people on our plan, and that's $120,000, just in a really quick kind of math of like, what does first dollar do opposed to being dollars after? And you can, that math can go all the way up to almost $400,000, just depending upon that utilization. I mean, what is our average total utilization? And I would think with the way costs are, it's not hard to rack up a couple of hundred-dollar bill in a single visit. Calling for a visit could rack up a hundred dollar bill.
Right. And it's actually even hard to come up with our percentage, because we have employees that they start December 1, well, they have access to $4,200, and if they only access nothing for the month, well, then it looks like, oh, we didn't spend that much, but you probably already spent that on the first 11 months for a different employee, you know. So, so it's really hard to judge, like, what percentage did we actually use of the HRA? I just know I had to increase it to 85% to account for the difference in cost between the two.
So the health care that's coming our way is going to end December 31, 2022. So when's the new negotiation bargaining roundtable discussions will start January 1, 2022?
I'm not, Kim, do you know when they're going to start the negotiations?
I do know, I can't remember the exact dates, but I do know there is a proposal in language before Senate Ed sponsored by somebody with a particular date request by which information will be shared. And those two dates are different between the employer's negotiators and the union, the teacher's negotiators, to try and get information available to both sides earlier in the process, but also to not be obstructive to the budgeting process. So I can't remember which dates are which, but it would be well before, I believe, the January date of the year for the next round of negotiations. But those dates are sort of being reconsidered timeline-wise based on how it played out this time. It's very difficult for districts to budget this time around when the award, it wasn't even in a settlement, it was an imposed award, comes in mid-December. So that is being considered in, whether or not it is sort of corrective language for the previous or this separate bill that is before Senate Ed. I think what Senate Ed has asked and has happened is that the employer's negotiators, the lead people, to include, I don't know who was there, like Neil Odell and, and the attorney who was working for the employer's negotiators, and then the lead negotiator folks from the teachers' associations get together and think about, from the list of each of their requests for change from the current round that just happened, that would need to be legislated, are there commonalities? And there were a handful that were common and could be agreed upon. I think the Senate is likely to take up that, and those that are not commonly-held beliefs that are needed for the correction, I think, I don't know exactly how they're going to reconcile that, because some of them are kind of important. They were, you know, silent about grievance procedure. But that's not something that is sort of in conversation, agreed upon in the one meeting that was had between the two groups. So I think it's a stay tuned, and there is the acknowledgement that there are areas that really do need to be addressed with legislation before we have to get back at this process going forward.
Because I guess what I'm hoping and looking for is input into the next round, and like, testimony from every district's experience.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, that's not something that would be outside of the realm. I know we're awfully busy right now, but I would imagine there will be a point where there'll be interest in hearing directly from those people affected by this. And, and I think, right now, there's just that one piece of legislation that I think Senate Ed is asking people to kind of react to. So I will definitely keep opposed to, because I know Deb is masterful in understanding the numbers and impacts in a way that would be valued to hear that at the state level, I think, so.
Thank you.
So the important thing to note, I think Martha was saying, that we can't negotiate anything related to health care. So whatever the state has made the decision on, we need to follow that, and we can't then negotiate something different than that. The only thing we can negotiate is the portion of the benefit a part-time employee would get. Other than that, all the conditions are outlined in the agreement. The HRA, our planned, our planned document for that, unless it's specified in the, the new state health care plan, we do have some discretion over some little nuanced things, but, you know, I don't think we have to change our plan for those things, so I think we're going to keep those things as they are. But other than that, we can't negotiate anything related to health care.
Kim or Deb, maybe you can answer this question. So we're going to experience, our district, one of the largest in the state, if not the largest, is going to experience a significant hit to our budget in terms of paying for this improved coverage. Do you have a sense of how the impact will be felt by other districts across the state, especially smaller districts that may not have? I mean, school budgets are already stressed as it is.
Right, right.
We're going to feel this stress in one way or another. Do you have a sense of how other districts are going to manage this?
Well, I know the VFBA has been saying that the cost of the settlement or the award is $26 million, so it's going to cost the districts $26 million overall for the cost, is what their estimate is. You know, I've been talking just through our e-finance [inaudible]. implementation, there are some larger districts that have already been providing health insurance for part-time employees, or another one that may have already been providing for domestic partners. I mean, there are some that are like us, that neither won, and so those are a bigger exposure for the ones who hadn't been offering that benefit to either one. So I think it varies in terms of that. Those are the biggest costs for us, other than the HRA. The HRA is a significant cost as well.
And when we unified the contract, that's when the Essex Town folks went to being eligible, support staff eligible to elect family and, they could elect the coverages at full-time, the tiers. And so before that, though, that we recognized that difference and the cost associated with it, because we went from single coverage for Essex Town support staff to being covered at all the levels. So we have sort of gradually been exposed to some of it, and this exposure for those that are 17 and a half hours to 30 hours is likely to be pretty dramatic. And I think there's only so many ways to consolidate positions. I don't, I mean, I think that we struggle with the employment situation as it is now and getting coverage. So I'm sure that's not something that hasn't been thought of at all levels every time, but I don't know that we can optimize it any differently than we are, to try and make full-time employees out of any of those that might have been in the 20-hour range. And so I think we're exposed. And, yeah.
Probably a question more for Kim. Do you see, and I realize that this is very, very early days, but do you see going forward that the SBA is just going to sort of recommend that we continue to work and make adjustments with statewide negotiation? Or do you think that they might try to take a look at how this has gone, see that it was honestly probably about as bad as we could have expected, and then maybe consider a rollback to the legislature to return local control?
You know, I don't think that that's on the list of 10 or 12 things that are being strongly advocated for from the employer commissioners, and VSBA being sort of the group that, you know, took applications for that and appointed people and is the funding agency for it. But, and Neil Odell, the president, is actively engaged with these conversations. I don't think anybody has the appetite for rolling back the idea to local control. I haven't heard that mentioned. There's substantial costs in navigating in pockets, anyway. I know that in this case, we're taking this on, but there was good reason, honestly, to have done this three years ago, whenever it was, that we had the opportunity when the plans changed. That's really when the state should have had the will and the willingness to say, this is what we're going to do. Instead, they did the clawback, then realized the savings from the premium changes, and then went ahead and changed the plan to make it designed in a way that doesn't capture the savings, one thought, from a change in the way you utilize your healthcare. So that is sort of a perfect storm. But I have not heard a whisper of anybody saying it should be returned to local districts to negotiate. And you look at state employees, I mean, there are larger groups navigating that. It's, you know, I think there's good question to know whether or not, how VHI weathers it, you know, with their plans and their increases. And so everybody will stay alert to that. I think there are some things that are really important to move forward. In our current contracts, we have cash-in-lou, which means you can take cash instead of coverage. But if you are two employees working in our district, you don't get cash-in-lou. You are both having coverage. So now we have statewide coverage, and there should be no reason why if there are two employees working at different school districts, there should be cash-in-lou. It should be sort of like our contracts are designed, where if you're all participating in the same healthcare system that's statewide negotiated, there shouldn't be anybody getting cash-in-lou, because it's being covered under the same plan. That- Who works for- Who works, right, right. Not to suggest, I mean, some districts don't do cash-in-lou, some do do cash-in-lou, but if you do it and somebody, your partner is participating in the very same healthcare coverage, because it's covered by the state and they're working for a school district, it should be just like our internal. And I, you know, that has not been, that hadn't been contemplated before, but is among the considerations on the table that the employers are wanting to have the state see that. It'd be like working for two different agencies at the, in the state of Vermont. And I bet, I would think they don't allow cash-in-lou in that case, but honestly, I don't know for sure. Yeah. So that is, I think, that and then a statewide way to handle grievances is really, really important, because you could very quickly end up with a statewide negotiated plan being administered entirely differently if every grievance is going through the individual administrations, not to mention the burden in dealing with grievances on a plan that you really actually have no control over. So those are two big ones. We'll see.
Sure. Correct me if I'm wrong, but what I understood is that not every district was requiring insurance through Visbit, but so now they're being pulled into statewide, so there'll be quite a change. And I have not heard any challenges or disappointment or frustration of being pulled into the fold statewide.
The only ones I know that weren't with VHI were on the Catamount, not the Catamount, but the state's Health Connect plans, because they were smaller at the time. But now I think they're all mandated into those VHI plans. And I think it was such a small minority, you're probably not going to hear a big uproar on that.
Any other questions? Okay. Deb, thank you so much. Okay. So we're a little ahead of schedule, but Bob, it's here. So are you ready to go?
Yep.
Great. Switch.
I've got a few copies of the slides, if you don't have access to it electronically. So the focus for this evening inside of this sort of budget session, inside of a board meeting inside of the month of February, is the Center for Technology, and we have Bob Travers, the principal director of the Center for Technology. I'm going to start us off with just going through a few recap items, and then we'll hand it over to Bob to talk about the instructional programming at the Center for Technology and the plans for FY21. And then, next steps, we have a budget work session on the 11th, next Tuesday, and we'll continue to do, that will be focused on follow-up overview and review. And this evening, at the conclusion, we'll be trying to look and make sure that there's questions or guidance adjustments, that we get those this evening, just as we're starting to come up, and we have two more weeks of sessions, and trying to get a warning sign for the 18th. Just a reminder of our public page, and we're getting some traction on there. We haven't been able to zero out my clicks on that button, so I'm 100% certain what kind of traffic we're getting, except that it's a lot. The budget work sessions, we just finished the halfway mark, so we started the budget work sessions on the 14th of January. That was preceded by a guidance meeting in December, and then at the beginning of January, some deep dive into some of our literacy data that Beth walked the board through. We have the 11th and the 18th coming up for the budget work sessions. So last meeting, when we got together, we were joined by Dylan and Jackie, and we walked through, Beth walked the board through, and those two ended up elaborating on some of our instructional focus. And this was really targeted at our high-impact measurable outcomes. So we went through the work that we had started in December, and we said that these were our focus. Talked about the dedicated and targeted supports to achieve high-impact outcomes, that's literacy and math. And we presented to the board that the budget includes adding four literacy coaches to the two existing coaches, and to target those at each grade level K through five, and that we would add one math coach to the existing two, so that we could target those at grade clusters K1, 2, 3, and 4, 5, and really start to get at supporting teachers in that universal design of learning and in that core instruction. We focused on these elements, fostering a culture deeply committed to collaboration, data-driven decision, the achievement of guaranteed viable curriculum, comprehensive, multi-tiered system of supports, and more consistent embedded professional development. These are all kind of within that professional learning community culture that we look to build. And so the continuation of dedicated collaborative time on Tuesdays, $75,000 annual investment in teacher leadership stipends to lead those professional learning communities, and a continuation of about $800,000 annually that the district invests in professional development and continued learning, with an emphasis on bringing some of that learning into real embedded targeted training to build capacity, and therefore build efficacy. Strengthen and expand social emotional. Dylan talked about the systems and supports are in place to continue progress on the multi-year, and we walked through those stages where we are now. We even had a little animation where something appeared and said, we are here on step two. So we know that it's not an instantaneous process, but we are making and looking to make the investment to add one full-time SEL coach dedicated to the high school level, in addition to the five coaches that were hired in this fiscal year to focus on K8.
And there's also discussion at Essex Middle School. We have a guidance counselor that is retiring. Right now, we are reworking a job description, so we could hire an SEL coach focused in that position, to be full-time at Essex Middle School. And the other coach that was hired last year will be at ADL. And I know a board member brought that up, like, what about the middle school? So we're relooking at that guidance counselor position to be this. So stay tuned for that, because it's not quite baked out yet, but it will be. It doesn't add to the budget. That's what you need to know.
And at the last meeting, we talked about some of how we have had a reinvestment strategy in FY21, of really going after the administrative and other supports. Those budgets have seen a collective $720,000 reduction from their FY20 level, and those investments have been poured back into our instructional programs and instructional supports. A lot of the coaches that you see that are our major investment strategy for high-impact outcomes is in that instructional supports. And then finally, just a quick view on the proposed budget. There's some changes since January 8. Some of them have to do with incorporating the health settlement award into the Center for Technology, that then increased tuition, that then increased, they're very intertwined. You would think that you could change just one number, but it doesn't work that way. So there's some changes there, and you'll also note that I've separated out, so that there's $27,500 as an estimated cost that is CTE-specific. So as we talked about, $800,000, and then therefore, because it's a half-a-year, a $400,000 exposure, that was to all our employee base. So that employee base naturally breaks out between EWSD, CTE, child nutrition services, the RIN, and, you know, and so forth. So, but that's the reason there, because now that cost is now incorporated into CTE, therefore that CTE cost gets incorporated into our tuition. Makes sense? So I'm going to hand it over to the expert here, and it's that one. Yep?
Hello, everybody. Glad to be sitting over here again. It's been a while. So I think of this as the mission slide. And what I want to point out is, on that second bullet, qualified and caring instructors capable of developing a student's academic and technical knowledge and applications of these skills relevant to both employment and continuing education. In a nutshell, CTE's mission is preparing students for college and career readiness. How we have focused on that this year is we have completed our proficiency project on time. And to date, that means that all of the programs and all the academic teachers have gone through and expressed their learning outcomes in terms of proficiency language. That's been an important step for us, because our next move is to create a grading and reporting system that aligns with our nine different sending high schools. So a lot of our professional development monies have been spent on developing those proficiencies. Very proud of the work that our faculty has done. It's been a very iterative process. In fact, I don't think the model that we've built exists in many other career and tech ed centers. Beyond just crosswalking our proficiencies to the language that all our schools use, I challenge my staff to actually write technical proficiencies, so that the outcome of that work is to better align the core technical instruction at the center to the transferable skills that all of our sending schools are using for graduation requirements. So, in fact, the proficiency project has actually brought clearer focus to career and tech ed, inasmuch as we typically are allowed to confer six credits in a year, two or three of them are embedded academic credits, and the rest have been what I have always considered pass-through collective credits. And now, rather, we talk about how that technical instruction leads to transferable skills for graduation proficiency. So it's been a great project for us to be working on. The other thing that we've been working on this year is our commitment to increasing literacy instruction within the center. We have partnered for the last few years with Partnership for Literacy and Learning, and that has led to a consideration for our next year to subcontract with them for a part-time literacy coach for our instructors. The main focus of that would be to increase all teachers' commitment to disciplinary literacy, so that we're not just relying on English teachers to teach literacy, but auto-teachers and pastry chefs and all of the teachers that have the interest of the students, so they have the leverage to help those students increase their skills. We're also considering including or increasing our ELL services. Both the Partnership in Literacy and Learning and the ELL services would be paid for through the Perkins Grant that I'm writing right now. For the CTE overview, I want to, oh, I said that. We're very pleased with our proficiency work. I do want to point out that for programs next year, we are exploring, again, an advanced manufacturing program, and we're considering doing that through satelliteing with four or five of our sending high schools, so that the instruction should happen over three years. And the idea will be to feature a lot of the academic instruction at the sending schools, and then use our labs differently, so that students cycle in on a rotating schedule. Instead of asking students to commit a full year away from their high school, we're using this idea to hopefully pilot a different way for high schools to utilize the tech center, hopefully, again, increasing access. Our programs this year, what I did was included the number of enrollments in each of those programs. Our enrollments are, have been holding steady for the last few years, and in fact, our FTEP is up a little bit more than seven enrollments this year. We continue to be the largest tech center in the state of Vermont. Just a quick slide to remind folks that we don't just do technical courses, technical programming. These are all our academic offerings at the tech center. And I think I've showed you this on a number of different times, but we're very proud of the number of sections and the number of academic offerings we offer. We do that, and we've increased it over the last 16 years that I've been here, because it's an issue around access for students. We want to make sure that students can graduate.
Has there been any discussion and, or asking if you look at a curriculum involving, like- Has there been any discussion or asking if you look at a curriculum involving like community services because there's many different fields that community services, one can dip their toe into?
So like a section of Health and Human Services?
Yes, you know firefighter.
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah.
Police.
I get it, yeah. Emergency services.
Emergency services, but serving the community.
It's an excellent point, and in fact, many of my students will tell me that they would take a program like that. At the state, we are... So for approval, we are required to prove that the programs that we offer provide instruction for high demand, high skill, and/or high wage. There aren't a lot of fire services.
That are paid.
That are paid.
Voluntarily.
That's right. That's right. But that doesn't mean that those skills aren't transferable.
Correct.
It's just at what point do we choose to invest in the equipment and the people to provide a program like that?
Thank you.
Right? So I think it would be a popular one.
Yes.
Especially for students that come to us out of Fairfax and Georgia. You can see our students walking around with their radios as volunteer EMTs and firefighters within the tech center. There's a real proud heritage around that within the tech center.
Thank you.
And college and career ready. Here are some numbers that we are measured by. So industry-recognized credentials, industry-recognized credentials. We offer thirty-three different IRCs at the center, and this past year, we don't have the current year count, but this past year, eighty percent of our students who are eligible earned an industry-recognized credential. Eighty-two percent of our students go on to career work experiences. And this year, we have twenty-nine students who are enrolled in a full-time co-op placement, which means they're actually earning high school credits and getting paid full-time to graduate. The largest bulk of those numbers are made up by auto students and childhood ed human services students. Our second years are dedicated co-ops. But every year by this time in the school year, we have fifteen students who are interested in going on construction trades, electrical co-ops that lead to apprenticeships, statewide apprenticeships. Our college connections data, last year, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, a hundred and eight students earned college credits. That's thirty-two percent. That was thirty-two percent of our student body. This year, we're projecting an increase, a hundred and fifteen students are projected to earn college credits. That is two hundred and thirty-four unique college course enrollments. How we get there is two ways. We have the Fast Forward Program in which students can earn college credits in... I don't think we've listed them there. In technical programming?
Was it two ahead?
Yeah, I think they were there.
So those are the Fast Forward classes that we offer through our programs, and that's just a sampling. So that is concurrent enrollment while students are enrolled in high school and stay in this building. And then we also send students out to classes at CCB, VTC, and online courses.
One back.
At the New England Culinary Institute. Those are our partner colleges, and we continue to look for ways to grow that. Right now, our natural resources instructor is looking for ways to get a dual enrollment program approved in his program through Vermont Technical College. The building trades teachers are also working hard for a construction management dual enrollment program. Let me just make sure I didn't skip anything. And so just a reminder, most of you saw on the tour, we have a lot of great spaces. Those are just three of the programs that feature services to the public. Professional Foods is just an amazing program that provides meals both to our staff within this building and home meal replacement programs, and then to the paying customers outside. We have a very thriving CTE preschool program, and the second year of cosmetology opens up its doors. But we also sell cider and syrup and Christmas trees from Natural Resources, and we offer computer services to elderly through our Computer Systems Technology Program. So we work hard to try to place our students in direct contact with customers. So this is a picture of Miriam Alchiderchi. Miriam is a senior from Menusky High School. This year, she is in the Health Informatics Program. Last year, she was in the Dental Assisting Program. She is our fifth student in four years to be nominated as a Presidential Scholar for Excellence in Career and Technical Education. It was a really fun night to see Miriam receive her certificate at the State House. She is going to go on to some very excellent plans at the center. Right now, she's the class president for the Health Informatics Program. And you see, every year, we go to Skills USA. We had over ninety students compete in the local competition. And last year, we had eleven go off to Kansas City to compete in the national competitions. And you see, I think seventeen golds, sixteen silvers, seventeen bronze. We're not just a little bit proud of our students. And if you were able to see the local competition when they win, a room full of high school career and tech ed center students at the end of two days of competition, the great looks on their faces and the sportsmanship in the competition is always a fun night. Minus the rubber chicken, that goes along with the dinner that night. The students really have a great time. Our open house is coming up next Saturday, the fifteenth. Please feel welcome to attend. We are almost full on our workshops. We provide eighth, ninth, and tenth grade workshops for students through the majority of our programs in which they get a chance to put their hands on the equipment or do some tasks that are indicative of the things that they'll learn, along with the teachers. That's something that has grown every year, and it's one of our efforts to make it known that students at a younger age should be thinking about career preparation.
So before we go on to some numbers, are there some program questions or curiosities that folks have?
Do the adult numbers and certifications?
So our numbers continue to be very steady in the Skill Tech Division. I can provide those numbers. I don't have them with me right now, but they're very strong. Well over three hundred students served every year. Right now, new to the offerings is a phlebotomy class, and we have been doing the opioid course for the public to provide them information, both in the setting of employment and employees and also just as...
Always viewed that program as critical to the whole county, to the region.
Yeah.
Just, you know, adult educational opportunities to upgrade your skills, get new certifications.
So there are a couple of ideas that we're working on. One of the things that we're going to do in March is we're doing a center-wide Program Advisory Board breakfast. Thank you for all of our employers. We expect to have over a hundred employers present. So that's also going to provide us an opportunity to survey those employers about the trends, employment trends going forward. It's a critical need of Perkins Five as we move forward. I am required to engage community in a much more deliberate way. So every other year, we'll be engaging stakeholders around what we can do to help provide a well-trained workforce.
Excellent. Thank you, Bob. It's important.
Kim?
I have a bit missed there, but the component where we're piloting, having students complete their program over three years with their much of their work.
Right.
Academic work happening in their home school.
Right.
Is that... I'm just thinking about the funding piece of it. Are we... Is this being piloted because the state is looking at better ways to fund it, or how are we doing it?
So I think it's the result of a couple of recent pieces of legislation in which high schools have been made to make career readiness more of a focus. And the idea that the Agency of Education would like to see tech centers reach out to their sending high schools to provide a different kind of access to the resources that we have here. The pilot program that I'm thinking of hopefully will be funded through a program innovation grant. The issues really become whose teachers are whose, whose students are whose. And we've tried these satellite programs in a number of different ways before. I have commitment from four of our nine sending high schools to sit together in a brainstorming session to talk about the idea. I'm very interested in trying to push the envelope on what high school looks like and how students can be tech students and high school students and access us differently than coming here every day, all day for a hundred and eighty days. It would require the high schools to think differently about their scheduling as well. The other thing that we're pushing the envelope on is through adult education, adult workforce education. I am interested in trying to create traction behind a fifth-year bridge for high school students who have graduated high school but don't have a plan for college or to go on to a specific career. We have a lot of students who just aren't quite sure what the next step should be, and I think that the state would do well to fund a bridge year in which we would use the Skill Tech model, shorter classes that lead to certifications that are tied directly to post-secondary and potential employers.
Great idea.
That's so exciting to hear. So is there traction at the state level for that?
There's interest at the state level. Again, it's always the question of funding.
Yeah.
Right now, what's keeping us from doing that is by law, a student can only be counted as one-point-oh FTE. Anything beyond that year does not necessarily need to be funded within an academic year. So they would view students who timed out of the system or graduated out of the system as adults with a diploma, and so we can't charge the sending districts. But there are mechanisms in which they could, I think, provide VSAC more funding?
Yeah.
To allow for loans.
None.
Right? So there are different ideas.
Thank you. And then, so I think maybe less exciting or interesting is what happens with the FT when you're spreading it and the academic work is happening at their home school? Is this part of the innovation grant, so you don't have to figure that out?
I don't... So what I'm interested in is that I'm interested in having students understand different pathways while they're at high school. And that building relationship is one of the most important things we can do with our sending high schools and getting students and their families to understand that the options at tech centers don't close doors, but they, I think, open more doors than they realize. And so my idea is to build a three- or four-year program of study in which we say, "These are the types of classes that lead to careers in these fields. Do these courses at your sending school. We will host field study in seminar style at the tech center. We'll schedule on a rotating basis students into our labs. We'll utilize our teachers to do that instruction." And then they'll have a better idea as they move into their junior and senior year just what the benefits of coming here for completion within that program would look like.
So... Does anybody have any other questions in between there? Because I am thinking about it with respect to proficiency, you know, based learning.
Yep.
How you report out from a grading standpoint to all the different models that are out there. But that is... What you're saying resonates so much so with personalized learning, the requirements under Act seventy-seven.
Sure.
Proficiency-based learning and allowing for that flexibility to demonstrate proficiency in areas.
Right.
Through the work they'd be doing with you.
It's a great point because high schools are trying to build these opportunities for students to do their capstones, and we've always done it in the tech center. So that is why I had the realization when we got into the proficiency work that, whoa, hold it, now we can look at those four credits as not just pass-through credits. These students are learning so much more. Now you, the state and the sending schools, have provided us the language to give back to them about the transferable skills and the progress students are making.
Makes so much sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions on program? Time for the numbers.
So just a reminder, the Center for Technology is primarily funded through tuition, local tuition is a portion of that that's on behalf, and of course, is federal and state grants and some other assistance that comes in. But tuition is its primary driver. And so all the communities and the districts within our region help pay for the Center for Technology. We're the host for the Center for Technology, Essex, but our community is not obligated to fund the eight-million-dollar budget. So it's just as a primer. And it is funded in a number of ways through this very important number, which is the six semester average. And there is an increase this year. And according to numbers, which are very small on this slide, but perhaps large enough for you to see on your paper, I think what we see is some very good kind of data going forward. We know that Bob's FTE in this year is one of the higher that we've had. We see that we're going to be dropping off a three-twenty-one, and we just brought on a three-seventy-one. So this bodes really well for the six semester average, which gives us some wind in the sail to do planning because we know what future funding is coming, opposed to sometimes you could be looking at that and losing a three-seventy-one and bringing on a three-twenty-one. And then you've got... You know that you're going to be stuck with that for six semesters going through. So we're in a really good position. It's a position of strength, and I think we've got, you know, not just Bob and his leadership team, but his entire leadership team, who's just always pressing sort of innovation and service to students. So it's really exciting that way. So one of the ways that we also... So we pay the tuition, just like every district, but we have this hosting agreement, and by statute, or at least by rule, there's a necessity to make sure that shared costs are appropriated. So we go through a process in which we look at shared district personnel and services, shared educational center personnel and services, shared utilities, and then the debt service, which is related to the One Campus Project. The other debt service as a part of this is sort of like a landlord, is that, you know, we are not going to... If the tech center were to ever leave, we are not going to dismantle, you know, two-hundred or a hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet and remove it from our building. And we're going to still have a roof over it, and we're going to have other debt services related. But the One Campus Project was very different in which we brought programs that were off, on, and we got state funding that was specific to tech ed. So you can see that the numbers add up. Property Services, Technology, Central Office is a portion of the Central Office that is in here. And then we have our Library Nurse, Safety and Security, and Custodial, which are, you know, the tech center would be responsible if it was a standalone to have a full library and a librarian for EQS purposes. It would have to have a full-time nurse, probably at four hundred students that might have a nurse plus. So this way, the sharing kind of really works out well. Shared utilities to just those that aren't separately metered. They do have some separately metered items, and they just pay for those. So again, rather small numbers, but I just wanted to be transparent of how this works. We take something like maintenance, we put that into the total square footage of EWSD. We'll take a look at Custodian, which is ed center only, and we'll take that as a square footage of the ed center. And then we look at student counts as a percentage of EWSD total and student counts versus just the ed center, CTE versus EHS, and then square footage and so forth. So we go through this process that is transparent both to the RAB and to Bob and to EWSD to make sure that this number represents the fair share of our good benefit of hosting the largest and best technical center in the state of Vermont. The total budget is eight million four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. That's approximately... That's approximately $276,000 greater than the FY '20 approved budget, or about 3.4%. So how that breaks down then to us is that total tuition will need to go from $17,000 to $17,561, or about a 3.3% increase. Tuition is broken down in two ways. There's both the on behalf, which we put into our budget so that the state can generate that overall tax revenue and then they distribute it to the technical centers based upon a six semester FTE. And that number is, is 9189 this year. And it's part of the calculations the AOE does in preparation for the December 1st Tax Commissioner Letter. That's going up 4.3%, the on behalf. The district tuition, so the tuition that will pay, as, as far as our exclusive share is, will be $8,372, or about a 2.3% increase.
I'm sure I should understand this by now, but I'm not sure I've ever seen it broken down as district tuition and on behalf payment. I'm not sure what that means.
Yeah. So on our budget for EWSD, we have two lines in expenses. One is an on behalf line for tech tuition. And that would be the, our six semester average times the 9189. And then we have tech tuition that we also fund. And then in revenue, we have the on behalf that matches the tech tuition on behalf down below. So we've budgeted that way, you know, the, the high school budget, U46 before this was always that way to, to budget so that the total amount was reflected in it.
If we send a student, and I am sorry for not having this sink in for me to get it, because I'm not getting it. If we send a student, so this is the tuition we're paying for our students.
For our six semester average, not for who's attending currently.
So this is the revenue generated for, oh, I'm sorry. So is this about tuition impact on Essex High School students going?
Yep. So this is the tuition for six semester averages. I know it gets confusing because we, you can't think about who's attending. You have to think about the six semester average. So in fact, right now, we have, last year, our six semester average for EWSD was 67.25. It's 71.20. I think currently, we have over 80 students?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. FTE, yeah, more bodies. But I think we actually have like 80 FTEs. We have like 147 bodies. And so then it comes down to that's our six semester average. And then you can see that our tech tuition here, and these lines tie out to the EWSD budget. So the tech tuition to CTE, of course, this is just a CTE. We also, EWSD has students that attend Burlington Tech and Northwestern.
Northwest Tech Center.
Yeah. Yeah. Point eight six.
The key thing for me is without success, six semester average, you'd be, you'd have these spikes all the time with every enrollment. And this tends to average it out so that you can better respond to changes in enrollments. It's, it's, it's the mechanism.
Yeah. It's a, it's a good smoothing mechanism. It can, it can, it can prevent some innovation. You know, you're, you're launching a program that, if you're not discontinuing a program, you're launching a program for free. Because everyone that enrolls in that, there's, you know, no money in the first year. Then you count those people and then next year, there's a sixth of them involved. And so, and it can also discourage in some ways, some program abandonment or a need to really do some internal like reflection on like, what are we doing and how are we doing? Because you got this sort of slow path before you say, oh, things aren't good.
Right. When enrollment goes down, that's when things go, get really tough.
Right. And it can really, I mean, it can give, right. It can give a declining center a lot of revenue. For a period of time.
So it helps the average.
Brian, so our exposure is, is the totality is still 17,500 per, the average is 7120. So that could go, next year when we look at fiscal Y '22, we could either rise or fall based on the six semester average. But based on what you said, we had more students, then more unlikely we're going to have a higher average. So I guess I still don't understand why we're presenting it district tuition and then on behalf payment if the totality is 17,500.
Yep. Yeah, we can, it, it may be.
It's confusing. Sorry.
No, it's fine. I mean, it's, it's part of why these don't necessarily get posted to the public site until tomorrow, until after we've had our opportunity to improve them. Yeah. I mean, I think that this is, this is inside 51 Park Street, this is how we think about it. And this is how we bill and this is how, you know, because we do, so this is very much our inside baseball. But I can appreciate that really we just look at, here's our six semester average and here's our tech tuition.
Right. Bert Chelroy would look at 17,500 per student versus 51 Park Street. Okay.
Because also if we were getting that from another school, it would just be based on their six semester average and their, wouldn't necessarily break it down. We, we care what budget you have to work on and how many kids times the tuition, basically.
And everyone releases, on the announced tuition, everyone is required to release their, as if they had a full day program. But Essex is, is in the minority with full day program. So like Burlington Tech might be $818,500. Except it's only a half a year. So students get enrolled into a program for two half years to create a one-year program. So there's, there's ample opportunities to become confused by seeing numbers, but having to understand a little bit of how to interpret those. But I, I can improve this slide definitely just by kind of getting rid of some of the extra detail.
Now, given that Burlington has halftime enrollment occurring twice, then it'd still be counted as one FTE?
No, they're, they're fractionalized FTE.
Fractionalized?
Half, half FTE per year. Over two years it becomes one.
Because it's a half-day program.
By state law, they're required to announce the full cost of the education, which takes two years.
The totality, guys, if they're attending half year or not, okay. Okay.
So I'm thinking back to the years of when, was it Northwest, considering not having kids come down? Or using, dedicating to the Northwest Center or something. And I don't think it was, maybe it was at the very beginning of our tenure in this group or the end of separate groups. So I'm thinking in, would the six semester average help to dissuade that? Or discourage it because, or just if they're not available to come, they can't come, so?
So the big problem with that is if you took, I think it was 20, let's, let's call it 47 students at the time, I think it was. If you just take them out of the, the enrollments, that would have created this spiral down effect where although they weren't all coming from one program, in order to catch up to the declining revenue over that time, we would have either had to find a way to fill those enrollments or choose where we were going to save the money over three years.
Okay. Thank you.
Last question for me. Now, I understand our students are compelled to go to CTE if they have the same, the program offering. But for, if there's another tech center offers something that CTE doesn't, then we'd essentially be paying out tuition and that would appear on the line item, tuition expense because of the sending and then we'll be subject to the.
Every district is assigned a.
Tech center.
A region. And then you have to attend that region unless that region doesn't offer the tech program that you want.
Right. Because it's like avionics are not offered here, but they're offered at Burlington. But then that would appear as an expense under tuition in the budget, subject to six semester average.
You can see down here, you know, when we're down at Barry, Montpelier, Addison, Mississauga, Harwood, Alberg. I mean, some of those are within kind of a normal, like we have Alberg students that are attending Essex High School. But we certainly don't have Barry and Montpelier. But those, and we've had Bakersfield come down and.
We, we serve nine, we serve nine sending high schools within our service region. Every year, we have many more schools represented.
Outside the region.
Outside the region. This year, I've got 20 schools represented at the center.
Okay. And to put it in perspective a little bit, like our six semester average is at 71.2 for CTE. I think it's at maybe 8.6 for Burlington and then 0.86 for the Northwest. And because, you know, you get one person in and so that kind of rolls in.
Okay. Thank you.
So that is the Center for Technology. Any, is there more questions or any more questions with regards to that budget and what that looks like? You know, our big part usually is what's, how are we managing tuition? How are we maintaining the programs? What type of innovation can we fit within our sort of envelope?
So my question, I guess it's for Bob, is for the past few years, we've been trying to really contain our tuition increases. They've been very minimal. So this seems more significant than what we've been doing. What is driving that increase?
So there are, there are two areas that I don't feel like I have control when I am looking at increases to the, to the cost lines. Those are staffing and benefits. And I think that's where you're seeing the effect of the statewide health insurance. We, we benefit from a very constant staff. Our turnover is very minimal. We have hardworking staff who care deeply about what they're doing and they, and they love working with our students. And so we don't have a lot of turnover. That, over the years, increases our staffing costs. So there's a cost to having a well-seasoned, excellent staff. Those, I feel like we have, so if you look at costs outside of that area, that 80% of my budget, I feel like we've done a very, very good job of maintaining the costs. The other thing that you've seen over time is I think we've been working hard to right-size our budget and our staffing. So every year, I've been able to come with solutions, look at things differently and try to make some savings. We're, we're at the point where I think we're right-sized.
So, but this doesn't represent an investment in new program or additional positions?
No, the two positions that I was talking about would be grant-funded for school improvement.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions on the CTE budget? Okay. Bob, thank you. Thank you for the great work. You and your staff too.
I have great staff.
It's, it's a wonderful center. Okay.
So our budget recap, as we saw at the, at the beginning, which was our quick view. This is now our recap. This is where we're at. Tuition increases because of incorporating the healthcare cost into the tech center have been built in. And as I said, I've netted that cost then out of our portion of the statewide healthcare. And that budget right there with the changes since the 28th have us relatively in the same ballpark where our budget is at just around 0.9% increase. So under 1% increase in our expense budget. Our revenues are a little less this year. Brings us down into an educational spending of just under 2% increase. We add in the healthcare award and that brings us to 2.51% for our total ed spending. No changes in the last week in our equalized pupil. So we run the same numbers. We come down to a homestead tax rate, which before incentives is going up just over a penny and a half or 1.19%. And then we add in our incentive and we're down to $1.486, which is about two and a half, 2.6% increase. And then we add in the increased property values our communities have. And that brings up tax rates to 7.8 and 5.1. 68 to 70% of our community pays based upon income. A greater percentage pays upon income and property value, as we discussed at our last meeting, that much of the Westford community, much of rural Essex have plots that are greater than two acres. So they would be on a share between homestead value and income. But if we use about 70%, we're looking at the income sensitivity yield is at 2.35% increase. So it'd be, instead of 2.36% of income, it would be 2.41% of income. And remember that the tax department has done this, that it takes over 21 potential calculations for a homeowner to understand their exact tax impact. So this is not intended to be comprehensive in that way. And we also don't know what will happen between now and the passage of a budget for the state of Vermont. So just to review real quick, we started this process in December, talking about the administration's focus, that we were going to further our progress on the instructional plan. And I believe we've done that and we showed that evidence at the last meeting. We're going to further our progress on social emotional learning and our multi-year strategy. I believe that we've done that and maybe we can do some more as Beth sort of previewed for the board. We maintained our special ed service plan compliance. We ensured facility stewardship, adherence to policy and procedure, met or exceeded educational quality standards across the district. And I believe that steep reduction in administration and admin support, I think demonstrates a continued kind of work towards a promise of merger. As is the continued thing of every time there's a position open, we reimagine, we refocus, and we make sure that the next step that we take really addresses our vision and our equity from us. And then the board refined some of this guidance and said that it needed to be reasonable and responsible growth. It needed to be sustainable and it needed to be sensitive to the taxpayer's burden. And I think that the numbers show that we do that within our control. And that the fact that property values over the last five years in a place like Westford have presumably increased greater than 10%, that that is something that, you know, while it has a bigger burden, it's actually good news. I mean, we certainly wouldn't want to be in the other place where our CLA continues to climb because property values are declining by 10% over time. So. But that's where we are and that's the sentiment of administration, is that we've delivered a budget up to this point. We continue to seem to get positive feedback, or at least not other feedback. And that we, and that we feel like we've hit the guidance where it is. So I guess what we wanted to try to do is understand where we are on the 4th of February and where we need to be on the 18th. Are we, where, where are we and what might the next steps look like?
So, I hear you asking board members to reflect. You have nothing more to present at a further budget workshop. So I hear you asking, is the board comfortable with what they're seeing? Or are there things that they want the administration to go back and look at before our next meeting? Diane.
Can we have a detail of the promise of merger costs or, or savings, so that the public does understand that we have gone that step? My dear husband will say that, you know, avoided costs are not savings. Um, yeah, he and I have interesting, we, we have, we have other discussions at home, but I mean, it, 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 he does sort of have a point, okay? But I, I would like the, the community to know, have we fulfilled the steps, are we continuing to fill the steps of the promise of merger, what we set out to do? And I, I think I've seen some of those, but I'd like to have a detail so that we can...
I think you're right. I, I was thinking the same thing earlier, that, you know, we still have incentive payments, and so as long as we still have incentive payments, I think it's good to show. And I think we always have to continually remind the community that we never said we would outright save the money. We said, that's how much money we would save over what we would have otherwise spent.
Right.
So...
I think there was one slide, the reinvestment slide, that demonstrates the year-over-year seven hundred and twenty thousand in savings on administrative and other supports, and shows the categorical investments in instructional programs and instructional supports. That's sort of a high-level, year-over-year, but I think we have done it in the past, a slide that went back from the merger forward.
We've got that information.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's helpful to, if, if sort of the, the whole board's kind of on that same page, that for as long as we have the incentive, we want to be demonstrating the promise of merger. I know there was talk about, at, at some point, it's about, you know, it's about that we're merged.
Right.
Um, but I think that this would be a good time to kind of go back, and, and if we're not reworking a lot of numbers or so forth, is to spend the week on, you know, some of the promise of merger, update some of the stuff, because it's, it's been a little bit since we put our eyes on it, and we have some things that we continue to do. I mean, in FY twenty-one, we'll see, I believe, one of our first moments where we're having a reassignment of a teacher due to enrollment from one building to another building. And we have our ongoing incredible success story of our parents and families being able to not disenroll because they moved three miles.
Right.
So, we have some really good things to, to be able to...
And you should, we should, in this budget, be getting our first half of the transportation reimbursement for the added transportation costs and...
Yeah, it's, yep. I mean, again, we, we've always, we've been budgeting more than we've been spending, but I am, I am anticipating...
Which makes it complicated.
I'm anticipating a good increase in that, and then we'll see, and that, that will be, that will help us in the future quite a bit, you know, that reimbursement going forward. It's just that we've...
Takes two years.
Built up the time in which we're doing it.
Kim?
I think I hadn't thought about it in the vein of while we're receiving incentive, making certain that we're continuing to demonstrate the promise of merger, however we, whatever we title it. But I think that serves two purposes, to make that connection, because it is a reminder, even though we put it in there to say, oh, if we didn't have the incentive, our increase would have only been this.
Yeah.
The reality is, we have the incentive. We've known we were gonna have it throughout. So, to the extent we can link that to where we're making savings, it makes that much more sense that we're showing them the two cents declining, which is a two-cent increase every year that we start each budget season with. So, I, yeah, I appreciate thinking about it in that way, Martha, so.
There's like twenty-two points on that promise of merger.
Yeah.
Um, and only one of them really discreetly talks about money savings.
Yeah, right.
So, I think that's also good to bring back, because a lot of people look at, like, what's this merger done?
Yeah.
And I think we just haven't, we haven't created a narrative to, to let them know.
Well, I mean, we, we have investments in equity.
We know. And talked about this.
We're not living in their family rooms.
Yeah.
Telling them every day.
But we do have investments in equity. We do have investments in, in other things. And I think we have done, that we would not have done had we been different districts.
Yeah.
And I think we need to say, these things occurred because of this initiative, and I want those broadcast.
Yeah.
So, it's not just savings. Some of them are actually, we're getting, we're better off because...
Yeah, I think last year, it was Beth who said that that year was the first year that staff on the front lines really felt the impact of the merger.
Yeah.
And so I think as we can, if we can continue to demonstrate how things are changing at every level of the organization, I think that, you know, hopefully, it'll be less focused on how much money we've saved versus how much are we gaining in now acting and behaving as one unified district.
Including students in that.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think one thing that might help folks understand it better is, we can talk about dollar savings, but then also show how they're related to, how did they come about in the savings? Was it a decre- decrease in number of bodies or number of employees? Because I think that'll speak more to understanding the actual savings. If we, for example, flew up from a thousand employees to nine hundred employees, people are gonna see the, the reductions.
Yeah.
No, no, but I mean, it's...
We've always focused, so far, we've had, because the promise of merger document really talks about that the savings was primarily gonna come from the central office.
Right.
And, you know, we started that pretty quickly with the one business manager, one superintendent. We got rid of a finance person, got rid of a legal person, got rid of a curriculum person. So, we, we've continued to kind of do that, and I think that's, there's some good evidence for us to continue that list, and...
Right.
You know, depending upon how you look at that list, we've either saved well in excess of, of the million dollars that was thought of, and if you look at it over time with some kind of escalator, it's more like five million.
Right.
Um, which may be a little bit of that cost avoidance, but without a merger, there would have been a legal requirement to have a superintendent.
I'll shoot a one, yeah.
But it's not just the central office, but it's also...
Yeah.
Amplify that every time someone leaves or retires...
Yeah.
That position is being looked at as to whether to replace or not.
Right. And what we've chosen to do oftentimes is to, is to reimagine with a, with a place of like, where is this even more important to have somebody? So, Dylan talked about some, and Erin talked about that there was a special ed administrative assistant who was doing some transportation and other things, but when we eliminated that position, we ended up investing in the dispatcher for transportation, which has now allowed us to be more effective and reduce some outside cabs and contracts.
I mean, I think for, for me, the full circle of the promise of merger is if we can show the cost savings, if we can show the benefits of the organization being unified, and then if we can begin to show student outcomes have improved, that would be sort of the trifecta, right?
Yeah. Well, you know, the, the idea that this community within a generally small geographical area will soon have a pre-K twelve viable guaranteed curriculum for, you know, all the way across is...
Feeding into high school.
All feeding into what they've always traditionally fed into, but have never been that aligned before, is, I mean, it's amazing.
I think the total, man, the total number of employees has actually increased though.
Yeah. Yeah. Not in certified classroom teachers, obviously, but, you know, we obviously have added to it. In the last two years, we've hired eleven coaches, but we've also added eighteen individual assistants, pairs that work with students one-on-one, and...
Right.
So, you know, we, I think one of the things that we've found is, you know, we've, we've been able to achieve a, a great deal of savings without necessarily in-house legal counsel, but we've also seen the benefits of bringing in admin assistants or executive assistants, so that, so that some of our leaders can do higher-capacity, more strategic work...
Right.
And kind of partner with people to get other work done, you know, that's just up. So that, there isn't less work because we merged.
Right. I understand that.
You know, there's, but we can do it better.
Right.
And that's one of the things that we're finding.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So, good suggestion, Diane. Other things that board members would like worked on or done, or questions they need investigated prior to our next budget meeting? Kim?
I don't, I think only because Beth mentioned reconfiguring the counselor job to have a better understanding of the middle schools, and how many counselors serve each, and number of students, and, and what we call the support people...
Let's have the slides from...
Yeah, so if we read... It would just be taking one of the guidance counselors and putting in SEL coach.
And would that shift our numbers in a way that keeps it comparable, or, that's, I guess, my point, like...
Yeah, it doesn't really shift the numbers. It shifts the role. So, for ed quality standards, you need a guidance counselor slash mental health slash school psychologist.
All the same category?
Who mumps it all together with a number of students. So, we fall into those standards. We are really looking at our guidance counselor's job description anyways, now that we have SEL coaches. So, we're, Dylan is really focused in on that with the guidance counselors, and how has our merger and the things that we're doing around social-emotional learning really affected a jo- a job description of a guidance counselor? What are they doing differently?
And social workers with every school.
Schools use them differently.
Yeah.
So, some almost use them, and the elementary school's like an assistant principal, and they're not. They, they're really there to counsel kids. So, we are trying to get that, those aligned across as well, but it doesn't really affect the numbers.
Wouldn't necessarily affect...
Not in Q S.
Just in thinking last year about the difference between an athletic director slash whatever that position was versus an assistant principal, and trying to get some clarity around how those are serving different roles, but in similar positions and what the difference was. So, that is changing this year.
Yeah, I just told you we were gonna focus that, on that this year.
Yeah, so that is changing for this year, for the purpose of allowing there to be supervision happening at the assistant principal level.
Yes, and there'll be two administrators at both.
So, just to understand that there's, I assume, still a guidance counselor, whatever role that served. I'm not, again, I wouldn't know for sure what those do that are similar or different, but...
Yeah, we could bring that slide back in.
It's not a budgetary consideration as much as if we are sort of shifting the way we're delivering services, it's not bad if that is evolving to share it with us, but I, it's not...
Yeah.
It's not really a weight on the budget because of it thing.
Yeah, we, we may, we may or may not be in the position of sort of adjusting the, you know, some of the materials going out to the public. If we can make that decision, then we'll do it because it's part of our strategy of SEL expansion. But if we feel like it's too preliminary, then that's the benefit of having, you know, so many months until we execute.
Or it doesn't affect the budget, so.
Are there any cost-saving initiatives underway?
You know, in a, in a, yeah, and I mean, in a whole variety of different ways. I mean, you know, our biggest cost as a district is time. So, you know, there's a, an effort underway right now to look at a, an e-collect process for registration forms and to have it tied more into our student information system. Right now, there's a lot of management of paper on an annual basis. As anybody that has kids in school is that, you know, it's, you sit down, you fill out the four emergency forms, you sort of wish you could just say, ditto, see?
Right.
So, there's some of that. I mean, really, for us is that that's always the process. I mean, in two and a half years into the system, I feel like I've kind of regained sort of a perspective and knowledge and see where it's all coming. And so now, it's really trying about leveraging everything we're, we're doing to try to save time.
Right.
Specific costs, I mean, what's nice, it's built into the budget to some degree, though it's still preliminary, but you know that you authorized, and we went ahead with Green Lantern, and we're net, we're net metering for the entire district. Every building in the district is net metered. And with some of the legislation that some of our local legislators passed through, we were able to lift the cap on school districts and municipalities, so there was a five-hundred K cap on it, and now that cap is gone. So, we actually can do things even more aggressively, which will help us save some, some money long-term, and it gets us so that we're more sustainable.
Would that be something that shows up in the promise of merger? Like, that's a great story.
Yeah, it, it, it might.
It wouldn't have...
Yeah.
It wouldn't have likely occurred, even though certainly we were doing some with our solar panels in Essex Town, but, I mean, I, just to think open-mindedly about the ways we're capitalizing on our size and opportunity...
Yeah.
Right. To demonstrate it in that way is pretty cool.
Okay, so, I think I would say, if in the next day or two, you think of something that, another question you have, or something else you want looked at, please let me know. Okay? Are we ready to move on? All right. So, next up is our student report.
Uh, so, uh, yeah.
Sure.
So do I.
Yes.
So, this week, Thursday and Friday, we're meeting with two of the middle schools in the district. On Thursday, we're meeting with ADL students, and Friday, we're meeting with students from Westford. And the first three bullets you guys will see on the paper are the outcomes that we're hoping to come away with from the meetings. And then we have mapped out kind of some conversation topics and questions that we're hoping to ask. And then on the back of the paper, you'll see the student voice spectrum, which we've gone over with the board and the leadership team, and now we're gonna ask the students about it. So, do you wanna go over, um, outcomes?
Uh, yeah. So, what we're trying to get from these meetings is just, first of all, introduce ourselves to the students, because we have not been able to do that yet. Um, and just try and get a feel for what's going on in their schools. And we wanna try and build a relationship with them, so that we also know, like, next year, where we wanna start off. Like, this year, we kind of had to do a lot of planning in the beginning, and now we're really getting, like, the action part of it done. So then, we wanna also figure out how we can make it more efficient, so we can start off next year, like, hit the ground running. Um, and then for conversation topics, the four overarching things are student voice, social-emotional learning, like, day-to-day life, just how things are going in the school, and then PLPs. So, we don't know if we're gonna have time to get to all of those, but mainly, we wanna talk about student voice and just try to address their concerns and talk about their student leadership that's in their schools, and see how we can help with that, or if they know what they're even doing in that regard. And, yeah, we're gonna use the spectrum kind, we were thinking as an activity in the beginning to get them going and thinking about student voice, and then we're just kinda let the conversation flow and see how it goes.
Yeah. And then during our next student presentation to the board, we'll talk to you guys about how that went.
Okay.
Questions?
Yeah, how do you, how are the students chosen that end up meeting with you? Is that something the principal does at each school?
For Westford, we meet with the whole seventh and eighth grade, because there are not a enormous number of students. Um, and then, yeah. For ADL, for Westford, actually, we are also meeting, you'll see, we have two different meeting times. We're meeting with K through eight for half an hour in the morning, and then, um, the, I don't, I don't know if that's sixth grade, but, or, sorry, K through, K through six, sorry.
Yeah.
And then seventh and eighth grade, yeah. And then for ADL, I think they're chosen, like, or they volunteer.
Um, principal said that she was either gonna try picking people to get, like, a representative group, or maybe a mix of volunteers and chosen kids, but I think the principals are... group or maybe a mix of volunteers and chosen kids, but I think the principals are picking, so, yeah.
Question?
There was, um, a comment here about how to, do you know how to address concerns in your school? At a public meeting last night, I was asked that very question and it came from a student. Long-term resident, been in their community for a long time. And it had to do with a, um, an administrative decision on a course that that student wanted to take. And both student and parents were at a loss for how he went about that. And so I explained they needed to go back up through the process with teacher, administrators, guidance, principals, necessary. But, it seems like we don't have, uh, at least I'm not aware of any process where general questions from students and where they go for resources. Is that your experience as well? Or it's probably specific to specific situations.
Yeah.
But is there a, a singular point of resource for students?
I think it depends on the school and what connections you have to certain people. Like, I, I know, I, I mean, it depends on, like, if you're in a club, you might go to the advisor of that club, or if you have a favorite teacher, or even if you have like a good connection with like either the principal or a guidance counselor. I think you would just take it to them and then a lot of the adults in the building would be better at navigating that.
Yeah, there isn't really a, or, not that I'm aware of, like, a structured way to get questions answered or get your concerns addressed. I know when it's come up in our school at least, it's been kind of confusing. Kids will have to go, first they go to their teachers, then their teachers tell them to go somewhere else, and then they kinda just get lost in the process.
That's, that was my sense of what was happening.
Yeah, so there isn't really somewhere kids know they can go and get the right information.
You wouldn't go to your advisor, like before your, no?
No.
So, that, that, I think it's, it's a right-on question, and I just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Tilly and Laura? I'm glad you're finally at this point, and, um, I look forward to what you have to say next month, and good luck. I hope it goes well.
Thank you. Thank you, Lauren.
Yeah, thank you.
I just wanted, just because we've had the advantage of, um, helping, not, not even that we've done anything, but understanding why you guys chose middle school over high school to start the conversations and just wanted to make sure people realize they will be going to EMS, it's just not scheduled yet. But do you guys just wanna share the thinking on starting with the middle school and the sort of change in leadership at the high school?
Yeah, definitely. I think one of the most important things about middle school is you kind of, it's like one of the first times you get a sense of like establishing who you are and you start to have like differing opinions on things. And we think that, um, a lot of these kids have really good ideas of, you know, what kinds of things they would like to see in their, in their own learning and kind of starting to get an idea of how to personalize it. And that's really what we wanna work with, um, with them on and just getting a sense of how to navigate, like, student voice, especially coming into the high school and just navigating the process.
And then there was just the other piece with the change in leadership at the high school, um, Laura and Tilly couldn't do it all because they already do a tremendous amount of work, so to, um, just to, to narrow the scope and choose the middle school leadership for this year, uh, as, um, that we're really excited to bring that to the new leader at the high school, and that's why they chose to focus on, um, on middle school for this year.
They may discover in asking the very question that I think you pointed out, Al, that there are good processes happening in other buildings that might help inform a more sort of streamlined process that informs the way it happens at the high school. So, right now, they wouldn't experience there being a process that has structure to it, but maybe they'll learn things from our middle school students, or maybe it'll be all the more evident that a structure would make sense for that process for all, all of the buildings.
I was just surprised that there wasn't a clear process and a singular focal point for at least getting on track as to where to go. Kinda caught me off-guard.
So, next month, when you present kind of your experience, uh, obviously you'll be presenting to the board as members of the board, um, will the leadership team be interested in the report or be able to get a copy of the report to just learn what?
Yeah, when it's, they're, the plan was that they would then meet with the principals again, so, they'll hear it firsthand from them.
They've invested so much time in developing their relationships and, um, so that they can walk in and feel trusted by administration and that they can feel that they can trust administration to access the students in the building, and that's, that's the process. And they have invested a lot of time doing it, so we are really grateful.
Nice.
That's been supportive, it's been great.
The time we've spent.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna move us along. So, um, task team updates, Liz?
Um, we are meeting on Thursday at nine o'clock at, um, central office, East Campus. For anyone who wants to come, it's a budget session planned at Communications. We're gonna be focusing on the flyer and making some decisions around how we're gonna, um, get the word out to the community about this budget. So that's Thursday.
A question about student, um, getting our eighteen-year-olds registered and maybe providing some budget information to Laura or?
Well, so, I know Iris is working on that, right, Tilly?
She, the voter, yeah, she had a booth a while ago, but I don't know if she's still.
So, I re, I did reach out to her, 'cause she was really active in that, and, um, and I haven't heard back from her, but I think it's a great thi, great idea and something that we should. Yeah, you, you would talk to her about it?
Yes, the, the date for registering to be able to vote in the presidential primary is getting very close.
Yeah, when, do you know what it is?
I don't remember.
Pretty close to the April day.
Yeah.
It's probably.
Same day.
Oh, that's true. We do in the whole state.
In the state, right? Yeah, same day.
So, we're fu, we're fine.
We're, we're good. You wanna walk in the polls and get registered, you know?
But.
But there could be other students who are turning eighteen between March whatever and April, whatever, um, that could vote on the budget, so.
So, if you remember from the last meeting, we talked about board engagement and going to existing community activities and meetings and having a presence with a table with some materials that we can provide for the community, and I think it would be a great idea to provide some voter res, information and try to recruit some of the seventeen and eight-year-old, eighteen-year-olds and get information, um, to them in the, through those opportunities as well. We'll work on that. The other thing I wanted to say is the, you'll remember that the group called VIEW, that was the Voices for Education Community Group that stemmed, um, into the work around so racial and social justice, are, um, hosting a viewing of The Hate U Give. It is from, um, it's on February twelfth, uh, at six o'clock in the auditorium at here, and, uh, it's followed by a dialogue and a panel of, of, uh, designed to, um, have real good engaged conversation about what this whole theme is of the book. Um, the, so, everyone is invited, and please spread the word, if you haven't seen it on Facebook, there's an, Iris made a great little flyer, and if you, if you wanna share and invite people to this, I think it's gonna be a really, um, really cool opportunity for the community to dive into this conversation, so I wanted to let you know that as well.
Will there be a way for people to have access to the viewing if they aren't able to be there?
So, you can, the movie is available, you can get it, it's on, I, it's on Netflix, it's definitely, it's, it's available to watch. What you're missing by not being in the room is the dialogue and, um, it's, it's gonna be really cool, that piece. I don't know if they've talked about whether that can be captured in any way, or if they're doing anything around that discussion, but I can, I can, um, see that.
And even if they were to do something after that follows up the work?
Yeah.
That it might include the link to be able to access the actual, um, viewing movie or?
Yeah.
With whatever write-up?
Yep.
Or people can read the book, it is the Vermont Reads book this year.
And, and because it is, it comes with a discussion guide as well, and it's, and, and the discussion guide, um, if you read the book, also, the idea is that people will take that and have conversations all over the state, and, so people can do that too. And Erin McGuire and Karen Dolan are running that group, so if you have any questions about that, um, you can reach out either through me or to either of them about that work.
Al?
When will the flyer come back to the board? For approval?
At the next, uh, oh, actually, we can make, we'll make those decisions at the meeting on Thursday, and then we can share them online if the board wants to see, if that's okay, Martha, we can share it then electronically, we don't need to have an in-person meeting to, to share that, and we can take comments that way? Does that make sense?
Sure.
So tomorrow, so Thursday, we'll have some, will we have all those, our, yeah, we'll have all the numbers on Thursday for, to fill out the card.
We'll have these numbers.
Right, so we will have, so we'll make some decisions on design and content on Thursday, and then we can let the board know.
I just wanted to, uh, suggest that the cost drivers, since they're so significant, ought to be mentioned on the flyer along with the budget numbers. And, uh, just, uh, some sort of indication of.
Our investments?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, it's, we have, the tax situation, I think, is pretty sensitive in this community, no matter how you look at it, but somehow got the, we should communicate that it's an increase. And that health increase is gonna be ongoing, so.
I mean, with the budget, you know, presentations up to now and some of the, the material that I provided about healthcare and how some methodology changed and how we had a 26% increase in cash and lieu, it's really not the, you know, the 13.9 is, is not materializing as the driver. What's definitely materializing is, as we've cut the budget by nearly three-quarters of a million dollars out of admin and support, we've invested that into literacy coaches and math coaches and.
You know, on a one card.
Yeah.
That healthcare item is a big item.
Well, I think it, you know, we, Natasha and I often kid is we need a, we need a headline, we need a Twitter caption, we need, we need a 200-word statement, and we need the whole document. So the flyer, like, the flyer can't be all things.
Understood.
It shouldn't be all things.
So as we look at a multi-pronged strategy, which is gonna, you know, which naturally will be benefited by a canvassing of the board to the community, you know, and, and whether it's a letter to the editor, to the, to multiple places, whether it's your own, um, coordinated effort on posting on front porch forum, on using your own social media, those are all ways that we're gonna be able to communicate that we've honestly just, I think in some ways, we've put too many eggs into too few baskets, and that's just not the way that, um, you can have a communication strategy any longer. It's.
Right.
So, we, I, I will be taking as we have this and creating multiple sort of packets of information that, uh, Ben can then push out, so there'll be a discrete Center for Technology package that can go out, a discrete outcomes investment package that can go out, and overall, um, energy's a, a promise of merger package that can go out. And then we can kind of continue to have almost a deck of cards. So, I know I meet with Ben soon.
Yep.
Perhaps before your meeting.
I think it's before our meeting.
So, um, he and I will strategize some and I can potentially come in, but I think we can do some good work to, to really leverage that one point.
Yep.
But the key part is, that's not enough.
Absolutely.
Our, our conversations and advocating for a budget that serves our kids, 'cause we're the only group, you are the only elected officials in the entire community that are responsible for public education, so this is really, I mean, this is the voice.
Yeah.
And now you have the advantage of having a board that's larger than we've ever seen and more unified and aligned, so, it's really a chance to.
Get out in the community and do this.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Liz? Kim, did you want to say anything about negotiations?
We will have an executive session at our next meeting to, um, to share the intention for the initial proposal and, and exchange will happen the following Monday. And the way we have done it in the past and will do it this time is that for the initial master agreement exchanges, where they're giving us their proposal, we're giving them ours, all three of us, our subcommittee will be there, so that we can all hear the rationale around whatever we, what we're offering and what they're asking for as well. And then I will typically lead as the one member from our subcommittee at each of the subsequent meetings unless I'm not able to be there, and then either Andre or Martha will have heard what our original rationale was, and we'll keep people informed as we go along to the extent that's appropriate. But we start with teachers on the seventeenth and with support staff in March.
Ten.
The ten, thank you. Yes, March tenth will be the exchange date. We've met with both and just talked a little bit about the lay of the land, what the impacts as we are estimating them to be around the healthcare, and then just conversation, which is always a good way to start, and I think, um, Martha had been with both groups, I think just Martha, with both groups on the ground rules. Oh, both of you guys were able to be there, thank you. On the ground rules, so those are agreed upon, there were just some dates and a little bit of language that needed cleanup, so that will also happen at the first meeting. So I think we will be on our way, and it was good to have had the primer around healthcare with Deb's expertise so that, um, so that we can share our proposals with you all with a better common understanding of one of the bigger drivers.
Questions for Kim? Okay, great. Local and statewide updates? I got a message from Senate Ed this week asking for an explanation of the language that we're looking to have renewed, so I sent that to them, and I get the sense that they're looking to put it in the miscellaneous ed bill. So, let's hope so. I know Dylan's working on it on the House side too, but it's encouraging that the Senate is taking the initiative, because last time it was a little bit of a rub, so, um, Kim, what, well, Beth testified.
Yes, Jackie and I testified to the not really made literacy bill yet. They're in a stage of gathering information then to write one, there's three kind of draft ones. It seemed to go well, it was much appreciated, and we shared what we're doing at EWSD and then gave, and that's what we shared, but the testimony that we handed them was research-based and what we're doing and why we're doing it and investments we're making. And that really Act 173 and our Vermont MTSS field guide should be our guides for what we do with literacy. So. Went well.
Good.
It's great to present with Jackie. It was like we didn't rehearse it, it just flowed right out of our mouth.
Kim, do you have anything else?
I think I shared what's looming out there with the healthcare. There is a bill to redefine the role of the State Board of Ed that's being looked at. There, um, there's apparently a bill out there, I think, related to making proficiency-based graduation requirements optional. I haven't read that in its, in any detail, I've just understood it to be out there being sponsored by somebody. Maybe it's in House right now, not Senate.
I think it's House. I think it's House.
I think it's in House. And then, um, I, I'm thinking about Patrick, I didn't attend last night, but I did attend the week before, and the, maybe you can talk about the petition, 'cause the only thing I'm thinking is, I would hate to see something be presented to the legislature for approval on this confusing, um, representation on the select board confuse the need to have the school board electing our own officials. So I'm just gonna throw that out there for someone with better intuition than I have on that, to, you know, I, we don't know what we don't know, 'cause it's not been voted. But that, Martha, I'll just put that on our radar as a...
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, we had our, the, uh, uh, stay-house delegation at the meeting last night. I think they're pretty clear, um, about the difference between the two. I think the biggest thing that they're gonna concern with is if they get two competing charter changes from the select board and the petition that's been submitted, which one do, does the legislature choose, or, um, you know, so, I mean, I think that they have their own things, but I think they're also pretty fully aware, and since Dylan is part of, you know, that process, um, you know, is very, you know, familiar with, you know, how that goes, that it's really separate silos as far as that's concerned.
Martha, can I clarify that we are, right now, we are under an existing statute that has us warn our own directors?
Yes. Which has a sunset of July first, two thousand twenty, which is why we're looking for them, either to make the language permanent,
or...
or extend the sunset. And there's some thought that they might want to extend the sunset, because A, we are still thinking they will rewrite the unified union statutes. But for me, I can't imagine they're gonna change this language, even if they do a rewrite, so I wish they would just make it permanent. But there's a difference of opinion about that, so we'll see what happens. Okay, um, VSPA has, um, is that next week they have a noon time legislative update webinar? Is it this, I have it on my calendar?
I think it actually is this Thursday noon, so they're doing webinars, I think, for each of the legislative updates, so we've received them in our inboxes. But, um, I'm pretty sure it's this Thursday, Martha. Thought I had a conflict, which I don't anymore, so I didn't put it in my calendar.
It is this Thursday from noon to one, so, um...
Those are free and available for us as members.
So if you happen to have the time, it would be a good opportunity to, um, learn what's coming up, what's happening.
Pretty dynamic a time, obviously, as the legislature tends to always be.
Yeah, things...
So the legislative report, which we got this past week, is not necessarily, just going to be read to you on Thursday. You will get the latest and the greatest, and I do know that there was testimony today, um, that Neil provided on the healthcare issue. So it is, they're in there constantly on all of our behalfs, so...
Yeah, we need someone keeping track. Yeah, the other thing I think that's happening in the House is they're taking a look at pre-K, and I've read some of the documents that have been submitted, and it's like, it's all over the place in terms of what people are asking for. So, it'll be interesting to see what comes out of that. Okay, um, anything else? Alright, so do your evaluation, especially if you have something on your mind. We meet at Ken next Tuesday for Budget Workshop, and on the eighteenth for our regular board meeting. Pat?
I have a question that's unrelated, um, but, uh, since we're in the process of or are going to be going through the hiring of three upcoming principals, um, I'm wondering about the mechanism and the board role in that? Just specifically, I guess, around the high school principal. And I know that you mentioned, and I, I agree that they don't want, you know, admin and board there to take away from the focus. But if we're not there for part of that, like at what point does the board have an opportunity to weigh in on what we would want to see from candidates, right? But is the survey it? Because, I mean, I feel like we, we should, for someone who's gonna come in and potentially be here for the next twenty years, potentially.
I think your recommendations would go through me then. Really, it is the superintendent making the recommendation to the board of a hire. But, yeah, that's, so you can certainly feed me information, and I will...
But there will...
But the needs assessment will really guide the screening, it will also guide the interview questions. That's how that's used.
I just wanted to make sure, 'cause it felt like by not being able to attend that, that the board was actually having less voice than a regular community member about a high school principal search. So, just knowing that we can, you know, ask you questions, or, you know, send you emails, that's...
Well, and you can fill out the survey.
Definitely should do a survey. And it does say school board, there is, I mean, we added that.
I haven't gone into the survey yet to fill it out, yeah.
Yeah, you identify yourself as a board member. But I assume there will also be some, there usually are some public opportunities to meet the finalists, which we would attend as interested parties, not specifically as the board.
Meet and greets that we would get to, like we did with...
Before for Beth's question, um, in the event of a unannounced principal resignation that occurred, that might or will occur after, um, your current search that's going on, is there gonna be, would there be the need for another search? Or would you canvas, um, the ones that you had already screened for the identified?
You mean the retirement that we just received from Fleming?
Sure, I didn't know if that was public or not.
Yeah, it's public, it's public.
That's why I said I anticipated.
We will be doing a search for that.
Another search, and not garnish from the pool that you had for the opening?
No.
It's a slightly different grade level.
Yeah.
It's a different grade level, it's a different needs assessment that will be done, what's needed for that school. Conversations with the leadership team. We can't just jump right into a search, I mean, there has to be gathering of information first, and I've already begun to do that.
Alright, I just was curious, 'cause it seemed like you had a candidate pool that existed for one, and whether...
It would be so easy if I could take our top two candidates and do that, but that probably...
Okay, fair enough.
I'd be shooting myself in the foot and the candidate that would get put someplace.
Alright, fair enough, thank you.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be fair to them.
But it's not probably...
I wish I could do it, though, 'cause we have two great candidates, so, yes.
And it's not an external search for those, right? I mean, it is an external search, it is not a consultant ser- search.
Right, we'll do that, yes.
That's something...
Yeah, I just did not, um, I felt like the high school really needed an external, and the, and the amount of work that's in it that would tie, that's all I would do for... I'm already, that's all I'm doing. But I'm not running it, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anything else before...
Yes, they're going to host the NESDEC folks when they come in to do the student forums.
Great.
Yeah.
Enjoy.
And be on the interview.
And help on the interview.
Yes.
Great. Okay, we are joined.
So, can you, Martha, do you want to start back?